All right, good evening. I'd like to call the September 14, 2023 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over today's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Monica Daniels for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to call forth Pastor Harrison with York Memorial AME Zion Church.
Good evening all.
Good evening.
Let us pray. Eternal and all wise God, we thank you and we praise you for this day. We recognize that it is in you that we live and move and have our very beings. We thank you, oh God, for calling us together for such a time as this. We pray now that we might experience the privilege of your presence. We pray that you, oh God, would align every thought, every deed, every word, everything that we seek to do in the midst of this meeting with your will. God, we pray for each person gathered here, and we pray a special blessing upon them, upon their households, and upon their families. We ask, oh God, that you would simply have your way in our midst, and we shall be thankful, and we know we shall be blessed. It is in your name that we ask all things, and we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Harrison.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
And Councilmember Ballas let us know he cannot attend this evening. Mayor Connolly, you have a form.
Thank you very much. When I move on to approval of tonight's agenda, Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
No changes this evening, Mayor.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. Ms. Kristi Dixon, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for your time. Again, I'm Kristi Dixon, Greenville resident of 20 years, and just wanted to briefly talk to you about the balloon ban, hoping that passes. But when you go back to vote, maybe just consider this. I was told if there was pushback on the balloon ban, it would be because of government oversight. We don't want to impede people's freedoms. And that's wonderful, but the freedom we would be impeding is just to let people release garbage into the air with no care where it lands, what bird it kills, what water it pollutes. And we certainly don't want to stop people from celebrating loved ones or special occasions by banning these balloons, but I would ask them to consider a thousand other ways to commemorate a celebration. And yes, like, let's just ban that. It's garbage. Okay? Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Dr. Robert Shaw. Dr. Shaw, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Thank you. You're probably getting tired of seeing me.
Never, never. Keep coming.
Always good to see you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I also would like to speak in favor of the ordinance preventing mass release of balloons in the city of Greenville. When I read about this in the paper a few weeks ago, I initially thought, well, the council has a lot bigger fish to fry than this one. But as I thought about it more and looked into the matter, it's apparent that the plastic balloons, plastic is not, does not degrade, and so it's a permanent fixture in trees, streams, rivers, causes harm to fish and animals. Ten states have banned the release of, mass release of balloons, including Tennessee and Virginia. And there are several alternatives to releasing balloons when one wants to memorialize a relative, such as planting a tree or painting on rocks. So I think this is an important issue. As I leave here tonight, if I go to McDonald's and get a bag of food and then throw it out the window, if a policeman sees me, I'm going to be given a fine for that. And I think release of balloons is, in the same league, is throwing trash out your car window. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Jeff Monaco. Mr. Monaco, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Hopefully you're not getting tired of seeing me.
No, no. Just like Dr. Shaw, we want you to keep coming back.
Okay, great. I'll come back. You know, thanks for this time. I really appreciate it. Talking tonight, like the others, in support of banning, release of nitrogen-filled balloons. I spent a lot of time kayaking in the area in Pitt County, especially on the Tarah River. Now that I'm retired, I do it a lot, and it's one of my favorite things. But there's a lot of plastic pollution on the river. I don't like seeing it, so anything that can be done to help reduce plastic pollution on the river and everywhere else would be quite beneficial, I feel. Also, as I said previously on the earlier meeting, I'm the chair of the Cypress Group of the Sierra Club. The other members of the Sierra Club feel the same way. They would like to see something done instead of releasing plastic balloons or nitrogen balloons to celebrate things. So all pollution is bad. Let's see what we can do, maybe to get some of it removed in form of plastic balloons. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Monaco. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Samantha Crowe. Ms. Crowe, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
I definitely don't count myself as a protester or a political activist at all. We go walking in River Park North a lot. We see a lot of trash, and a lot of it's balloons. We pick up the trash we can reach, but a lot of it's balloons and stuff attached to balloons that you can't get out of the, out of trees. And I, kind of much to what some of the other people said, and we were downstairs earlier with water and balloons, and we were told that that was littering, and of course, we were going to pick it up. But what makes balloon-releasing, you know, legal? So earlier, we had water and balloons downstairs, and then we were told we're littering. So is it the helium in the balloon that makes it legal to release? So if trash goes into the air and disappears, it's legal. But if I have water balloons on the ground, and we, obviously, we were just here to make a point saying that this is trash. It lands somewhere. But we were told, you know, this is, you have to leave. You have to pick this up. You're littering. We were planning to pick it up anyway. But I just kind of wanted to point out that if it's, if it has helium in it, it doesn't make it legal. You know, it's, it's still trash. So I really appreciate you guys, I appreciate you guys' time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers.
All right. Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Andrew Moorhead, 409 South Harding Street. I had not intended to speak on this issue tonight, but I just wanted to point out, as I was sitting there, thinking about the fact that the loss of helium is, that can be prevented as a major ancillary benefit here. Helium has been released. It's light enough, it escapes out of the atmosphere and goes into space. We need it to cool things like MRI instruments, electromagnetic resonance like we use at the chemistry department, all superconducting things right now. So that helium, which has skyrocketed in cost, if you've bought balloons recently, saving some of that would be a nice environmental benefit on top of the lack of litter in our beautiful parks and rivers and what have you. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moorhead. Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seen none. Close the public comment period. We'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. First board is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn.
I have one place. Is that right?
That's right.
Continue.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Next is the Greenville Utilities Commission. Mayor Connolly.
All right. I would, I guess I need to ask the council to nominate Dylan Godley.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes, five zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Godley.
Next board is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Protem Glover.
Continue.
Okay. Next board is the Multimodal Transportation Commission. Councilmember Robinson.
I think I have one appointment to make. Is that correct?
Got two.
Two. I've got two. I'd like to continue both of those. I can select the appropriate candidates. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilmember Smiley.
Continue, please.
Okay. Next is the Police Community Relations Committee. Mayor Protem Glover.
Continue.
Okay. And finally, we've got the Youth Council, also Mayor Protem Glover.
The Youth Council, they're just getting back to school, so presented.
Okay.
Goodness, did I make the only nomination today?
No, actually, I did.
You did. I'm sorry. Thank you.
And that concludes the appointments, Mayor Connolly.
All right. Thank you very much.
Trying to take credit for my work for years now.
That's, that's the story. I'm the mayor. I get credit and blame for everything, so.
I just wish I supported the Councilmembers.
All right. We'll move on to old business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item two under old business is a discussion of balloon releases within the city limits of Greenville. This was continued from the August 10, 2023 city council meeting. It was an item added to the agenda by Councilmember Blackburn. Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, first of all, thank all of the eloquent speakers who came out tonight to address this issue. And Dr. Shaw, I think you kind of summed up what maybe a lot of people might say, which is, you know, why is this an issue, given all the concerns that we all have these days? And one of the reasons that I thought it was important enough is, I do have that personal story of when I'm a runner and I was out running one morning and came across a nest on the ground, and in it were two baby birds. And I tried to get them to a rehabber in time and wasn't able to. They, one perished while I was driving, and one died once I got to the rehabber. And why did they die? Their legs were completely entangled in balloon ribbon. And their mother had, maybe mother and father had just abandoned the nest, maybe kicked, kicked the nest to the ground for all I know. And that was really my first direct personal experience with the kind of trauma that balloons cause to animals, and specifically, in this case, to the birds. We have all read about sea turtles and how they wash up to shore, and they've got a plastic straw in their nose. Well, their bellies are often full of plastic, and a lot of this plastic is maybe balloon plastic. But then I think Dr. Moorhead spoke very eloquently.
You didn't hear anything. I'm going to start all the way over. Did you hear some of what I said? Okay. Dr. Moorhead's being a chemist, spoke about the helium shortage and helium prices that have skyrocketed. We all need helium for healthcare. So there, there are actually some very real effects for human beings. And then there are also the effects for human beings of balloons that clog up our waterways and clog up our water systems and our stormwater. And I think something that I want to acknowledge is people who experience loss and the depth of their grief. And I understand the feeling of watching something float up and how it has an uplifting feeling, and I want to acknowledge the validity of that. And I think it's very important to acknowledge that when people hurt, they're looking for a way to feel better. They're looking for a way to make sure that their loved one is forever remembered. And I appreciate that, and I want to acknowledge how valid and important that is. And what I'm asking us to do tonight is to say, let's all focus on other ways to acknowledge loved ones that we've lost, that are not harmful to the environment, that are not harmful to stormwater systems, that don't float down to the ocean and kill our fish and our turtles and end up in whales, for all we know. They just keep floating. They keep getting gobbled up, these balloons do. So what I'm asking for the council to do tonight is to ask our city staff, they are the experts, to develop an ordinance that would prohibit the mass release of balloons within the city limits of Greenville.
Set a motion.
And I will make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
All right. Motion's been made, probably second. Madam Clerk, you got that. Councilmember Blackburn motion, second by Councilmember Smiley. Councilmember Daniels, you have something to say?
I wanted to kind of modify that motion. I understand the effects that balloon releasing has on our community, but I also serve a community that does not want this ban. So I was wondering with the mass, I did some research. I looked into Connecticut and Florida and different places like that. So they have a minimum between 10 to 25 balloons at a time. So the mass balloon releases, I understand, but I do not wish to eliminate the balloon releases altogether.
All right. Are you asking for an amendment, or are you just commenting?
I would like an amendment on that.
So this is real, first of all, I want to just thank Councilmember Daniels for, I know she's done a lot of research into this. I would like to hear from other members of council about if we were to say limit it to, to do more than 10 balloons released. I want to see us make progress. I would like to see, I would like to see the balloon releases entirely prohibited. If I understand correctly, I think Councilmember Daniels is saying she would like a modification that would allow maybe up to 10 balloons to be released. I'd like to hear from my peers on council what they think about that, including Councilmember Daniels.
I understand people like doing it, but it's litter. You know, some people, you know, we don't, you know, we not routinely simply allow people to throw, you know, items that do not deteriorate into, onto the ground for someone else to pick up. And as charming as balloon releases may be, at the end of the day, you know, those items, you know, that stuff falls to ground. It becomes litter. And it falls in a category of things we just, as a public, as a society, don't like to see each other do. So I appreciate the desire to make a little bit of litter allowed, but I would, I would, I think that the appropriate action is to say, is to, is a complete ban.
I don't, I don't think it's a matter of allowing litter to be banned. I think it's a matter of respecting how people grieve. And the majority of balloon bans are in the African-American community. Let's just be realistic. If we're going to ban anything that litters, we've got a lot of stuff to ban. You know, things we throw in weddings, the flowers that you go with flower girls. There'll be a lot of things, and we can make it sound any way we want to. But the reality is, with these balloon releases, someone has lost a loved one, and that means a lot to them, regardless of what it means to anyone else. And I speak for my district.
I'd like to veto that petition.
I've heard the same things from District 2. And because it is, it is a tradition in the African-American community to release the balloons, and it has a sentimental value to them. And that's something that we, as a council, should not make the decision to ban, because it may not be, you know, it may not be good for the river or whatever, but I don't think the African-Americans.
And I mean, and I understand it, and I, and I thank those who came forth, but there are also other states who realize that, too. They eliminate mass bans, but not all of them. Look up Connecticut. Look up Florida. All those places, they do not ban the balloon releases 100%. And that, that's something I think that I would like to see in Greenville.
So you're willing to vote for, you would, you'd be a yes to, like, no more than 10 or fewer, but you're a no for a complete ban?
Complete ban, correct.
Well, I got a question, and this might be for Councilmember Blackburn. It might be for our staff. Who's going to be responsible for the enforcement of it, and what will the penalty be?
So, if you don't mind, I'll just jump in. And I'm not an attorney. I know about unauthorized practice of law, but I do have an MPA, so I could talk about policy. When we talk, first of all, I would say, let's not be, let's not let something, an unknown get in the way of progress. Let's not let an unknown get in the way of progress. Every time you make progress, you're going into unknown territory. That's why it's progress. That's why it's so difficult. We are doing something that, that is very progressive, this conversation, and eventually, if we do develop this ordinance. So what does enforcement look like? I want to say that I greatly appreciate what Councilmember Daniels and Mayor Protem Glover have said about traditions in the African-American community. And I, I want to be sensitive to that and supportive of people who grieve in different ways. And when I think about enforcement, I think of, I think about, there's, there are 500 helium balloons on the town common, and a rock band is having a concert and getting ready to release them. In that situation, someone calls, and I don't know who they'd call. And this is something that staff can figure out, whether it is a member of the police or whether it's code enforcement. It might be our city manager to come down to the town common and say, this is not allowed. I don't imagine, you know, writing civil citations, much less anything criminal. I see enforcement as halting potential balloon releases. And if that rock band at the festival lets 500 balloons go, I do see some kind of a warning and potentially a litter citation, which I think is absolutely reasonable. We enforce litter violations. This is, can be enforced as a litter violation.
But I guess my follow-up to that question is, is there has to be some parameters that have to be set. You can't just openly go and say that you're going to enforce for certain things and not, because if somebody's getting a citation for it and somebody else is not, you know, you're going to open up the city for a lawsuit and say, why are you showing favoritism towards one person and not the other? Because I'm going to get the phone call when somebody's down at the town common or somebody's down at the Five Points for an event, and their kid accidentally let go of a balloon, and we have an officer that's doing their job and enforcing something that the council has put in place, and they get a citation, but somebody else may not get one.
And that's a great point. First of all, and I think Councilmember Daniels did this research, it really applies to 16 and over. So if a kid lets go of a balloon, that's going to happen. So absolutely not for a kid who accidentally, this is, the whole, the whole context is mass helium balloon releases. This speaks to intentional releases. And the other thing, we do complaint-based enforcement all the time. Complaint-based enforcement is, again, how I would foresee this being enforced. Just the way when somebody's grass gets too, too tall, somebody calls, or there's a junk car on the side of the road, somebody calls, and that gets enforced.
Sure. And I can, I can understand that. I guess I'm looking at, there's got to be some parameters that are set, because are we going to enforce it to the person that came out of a party store and they lost control of the balloons, and all of a sudden they're up in the atmosphere?
Again, the, the key language here is mass balloon release. This is intentional events with dozens of balloons. And again, to Councilmember Daniels' point, 10, we could, we could, we could say 10 or less, you know, but this is mass balloon releases, and this implies, this implies, or, yes, it implies intentionality. And so if we're accidentally letting go of a balloon, I, I don't think anyone would ever say, call the cops on that person.
Yeah, but I mean, if a police officer's going by, they've got to enforce the law, right?
Much like they would if they witness any type of litter. I mean, you know, you're driving along in your convertible, and your bag falls out of the car, then, you know, the police are not obligated to follow every convertible. But if they witness it, then that's litter. You know, I think that they're, you know, this is well within the bounds of existing policing. But if, just to summarize, I feel like I'm hearing consensus around, you know, that if you define, if for mass balloon, mass releases defined as more than 10 on a complaint-based system, or when, you know, witnessed by police in the normal course of their, their, and that it would be a fine akin to a litter, a standard litter violation. So.
And do we need to add for 16 and older?
I wouldn't put an age limit on it, because any of us could, I mean, you know, I don't want.
Accidental releases don't count.
I think let's let the staff, as they move forward, determine the legalities of it.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have cut you off. I was just saying, I was just at a ribbon cutting just now, like, at four o'clock today at a place, and they had, like, I don't know, 20, 30 balloons, and the thing just kept blowing back and forth. And, you know, it kept hitting the person there. I kept thinking to myself, maybe in a few hours, this will be illegal, if one of these goes away. I mean, and there was no intention there, but like, from an enforcement standpoint, if it's done, it's done, right?
But the language is mass balloon releases.
And generally, helium as well. Those are unlikely to.
Those were helium.
Well, they'd have to not do that.
But mass balloon releases. I think the language gives us those parameters. And I think intentionality is also part of it. And again, it's up to staff to determine how to craft the ordinance. So I would, I would accept Councilmember Daniels' request that it be, that we have a limit of 10 and under?
Not under, because if you do under, you could be one.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. 10 or more, yeah. No, no more than, any more than 10. So it can be limited to 10. So I accept that as a.
And the fine would be akin to a litter violation.
The fine could be akin to a litter violation.
I'll second that amendment.
Mayor.
All right. Mayor Protem Glover?
I think that we should move, as we do on other ordinances, we just, just don't decide tonight to make an ordinance. And I think that takes time, and we need to, like you said, we need police time. We need whoever's going to be policing it. Code enforcement doesn't have enough people to be here all the time. So, and not even, and our police on the staff right now. So where would you rather for the police to be, at somewhere where somebody's getting murdered or releasing a balloon? I mean, there, there are things you got to really think about realistically, when you are saying we're going to do an ordinance right away. I think we need to give staff, as we always have, give staff the opportunity to research it and bring it back to the council after they have researched it, and maybe create a staff committee, and let them look at it, research it, and bring their recommendations back to the council.
That's what I assumed the motion was, frankly, that we would direct staff to develop an ordinance and bring it back to us for future consideration.
And I've made, added the, and you've seconded the friendly amendment, so.
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
I do.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments? Councilmember Robinson?
Absolutely. When Councilmember Blackburn brought this up, I shared the story of finding balloons on my farm. They were single balloons, not a group of balloons. And so, you know, I don't like picking up trash on my farm. I love my farm. I love the animals out there, everything about it. I'm sure it doesn't make everybody happy, because I harvest animals off of it. And I'm sure there are people that don't like that. But that's my freedom of choice. But I don't like picking up litter. And, and so I started thinking about this, because I made my comment to my fellow council member. And so I did a little bit of education. So what I first learned, there are only 10 states in the country. And as best I could tell, only one city in North Carolina, and I stand to be corrected, because I didn't finish all my research before it was time to go, but I understood only Wrightsville Beach. Two, and one of them is Wrightsville Beach, is that correct?
Surf City.
And. And, you know, they're obviously a little island and they're predominantly waterways, the intercoastal runs through their island and the bridge and of course they've got the ocean on the sides. They were really worried about marine life. And I can tell you, you know, do I have interest in this? Sure I do. There was two kids that used to surf and they were worried about the pollution in the oceans. And so these two young men decided to do something about it. And so they decided to start trying to raise funds to go pick up the trash. So one of the things they went, they went into the surfing village and they got the kids in the village to try and make bracelets because the kids were on the street, didn't have any parents. So they figured, okay, we can kill two birds with one stone, we can contribute to the local economy by getting these kids to make bracelets. And number two, sell the braces to raise funds to clean up the plastic. And some of you who are active may know, it's called Four Oceans. They're everywhere in that. I mean, and you look at the trash or clean up, and basically that trash has been dumped into the ocean from third world countries. They just put, like we put ours on the landfill, they put theirs in the ocean. And so that kind of led me to, okay, as my other members would say, how do we actually enforce this? Because I think if a balloon is on my farm and it's helium, they don't just go away when you release them in there. If I release a balloon, it may go depending on the wind and the weather is coming, it may be in another state or another county way, well beyond us before it actually comes down. And so I thought about it. So how do we actually enforce this? There's not any other county in the state that does it, two cities. How do we do this? How do we make it effective and then how do you actually enforce it? Because I see a huge enforcement problem. And so, or do you go to the emergency and say, you can't sell balloons? And I know that we celebrate our birthdays with balloons and stuff on the back of the chairs when you come home in the morning or get up in the morning. And then we, you know, get rid of them as a proper way, but not everybody does that. So then the accident will loose out of the car, that you plan to take them in, the balloon gets loose and goes out the window. So I got a big problem with how do we enforce something like this to make it viable? And I don't, at least from what I'm seeing so far, it's not the mass balloon releases, it's the single balloons. Because I mean, the balloons I found have all been single balloons and maybe they came apart, I don't know. But a single balloon is just as bad. Under GS 160A, and this is a lawyer in me coming out, that statute allows us to pass littering statutes. And we have a littering statute and then we have a littering statute for the bars that our bars do and we have to clean it up. And I don't know, that's been enforced, I don't know if it's been enforced period, but it's an ordinance on the books. When I engaged my wife about this, and honey, you're hearing about it, your name's being mentioned, she said, well, remember when they did the six-pack containers that were on the beverages and how you, they did a public ad campaign about how not to throw those away because they get in, turtles get into them, ducks and waterbirds get into them and they get strangled and that kind of thing? Why not consider an ad campaign about, to the people who supply these type materials like party makers? And I'm not picking on party makers, but those styles of businesses that cater, the stores, grocery stores and whatnot, that cater to have a public ad to be responsible. But, you know, again, certain people have it as a celebration and I recognize that and I'm not one to try and step on those toes. And then the other thing you got, and this is another legal question, if we pick a random number of 10 and say, you can release up to 10, but not more than 10, then we're really not fixing the problem. But then again, if somebody says, I release 12, that's, that's not fair and you can't show a justifiable reason for picking 10 versus 12 from a legal standpoint, and you probably can't. So then we get into a legal question and I'm sorry my brain thinks like that, but I'm a lawyer. So I just see a whole lot of problems with it. And I'm thinking, at the end of the day, we hope people will exercise individual responsibility and accountability because the government can't do everything for everybody. We can't fix every problem and I'm not a big government person, I don't like a lot of regulations and I make it known. But I look at, how do we fix this problem? Because it is a problem. I've acknowledged it myself. And I'm thinking it might be better to look at a public ad campaign to try and, the people who supply this, be at the stores and whatnot, to encourage them to do the public ad campaign about being responsible when you do stuff like this. Because look at our roadways, we have littering statutes in the state, we have littering statutes in essentially every county, every town. And what, you know, we see the workers on the major thoroughfares picking up bags and bags and bags of trash. And I can't tell you the last time I've seen a littering ticket. I don't think I've ever seen a littering ticket in any court in 35 years. So again, it goes back, we can look good about passing something, but how do we actually enforce it? It would be better to spend our time and efforts to do an ad campaign to say, look, these are problems. And again, you say, well, we're not in a marine environment, so it's not. But yes, we have a river that runs through our county, we have multiple streams, they get in the trees, I recognize all that because it's not, it has not fallen on deaf ears and blind eyes, I promise you. I'm just thinking from a practical standpoint, if we're trying to fix a problem, how would we try to fix it? And if you say mass release and it's 10 balloons, you're still releasing 10 balloons. So what are we really doing?
Was that a motion, you wanted to fund a public ad campaign to?
Well, I would love this, I think, you know, it's like the Four Oceans, I communicated with those folks, not literally, those two boys when they first started, I mean, they had one color bracelet and I bought it. It was made out of rope by the kids in where they were surfing. And I've had some discussions and I said, why don't you guys do a really good campaign or spend a lot of effort trying to educate the people in these countries that are dumping instead of showing all these boats picking up the trash? I mean, try and get to the source of the problem instead of getting rid of the problem, get to the source of it.
I understand, I was just trying to make sure I understood your proposal.
Well, yeah, it's not really a proposal, it's me just talking off the end like I like to do.
Okay.
But I certainly would, I just don't see the viability of a regulation ordinance and I look at, I go, you know, I'm not a big government person, but I would as an alternative propose, let's figure out how to do an ad campaign to talk about not just 10 balloons, trail balloons or a mass release, let's talk about the release of any balloon. And then again, we put it back on the citizen to be accountable, if it's part of their family heritage and what they do in their community, then I have to respect that and go, you know, it is what it is.
I'll second his motion.
Councilmember Robinson, when we spoke earlier, I had the understanding that you supported this because you found those balloons on your property and you saw what they did.
Yes, ma'am.
And as, as to your point that you only find single ones, if you release 500, they fly into different places, so you are going to find a single one. I guess my concern is that, you know, again, to talk about the role of government, not to get too policy wonky, but the role of government is when you have things like a lack of enough information, as you're talking about. But where you have, you know, where you have negative effects that are felt by the public that nobody is responsible for, that's one of the reasons, the theoretical and basic practical reasons we have government, is where there are effects on the public, negative effects that no one is responsible for. And that's what we have here and these effects are very real. And I think what we're, what I'm proposing, what we're proposing here is a very reasonable sort of win-win response to a, to a big problem, you know, trash and the ribbons and, you know, even that you have said you don't like. And as far as, you know, we've talked a lot about enforcement, we've talked a lot about, you know, the reasonableness, you know, everything in this city is governed by some kind of ordinance. You know, I've got, we've got zoning ordinances that tell you what kind of building you can do. We've got code enforcement that tells you how your yard has to look. We have business setbacks, we have all kinds of ordinances, it's what we do all the time as a city. And so to add this one to it is within our purview and it's reasonable and I think we've all agreed that it's litter and we've all agreed that it's litter and I think that we really have a duty to keep our citizens protected from these harms. We have a duty to our waterways to keep them from being clogged up with plastic and we have a duty to the people who are going to come and visit to keep our city and our waterways beautiful. So I would like to see us continue with the initial proposal, which was to limit it to 10. That creates a lot less litter and it still allows people to grieve in a way that they are comfortable with or to celebrate in a way they're comfortable with. And so I would like to say that I stand by the initial proposal, the initial motion.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, there's been a motion and a second. We should organize that.
Yeah, yeah, most of them are made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Smiley. Any other discussion before we vote?
What is the motion? There's, wait, there's another motion on the floor.
But this motion replaces that for the moment.
Point of order, pursuant to rubber rules, council can only consider one main motion at a time. So Councilmember Blackburn's motion was for prohibition of mass release of balloons, that's the first motion, that's the main motion that's been seconded. Once the presider states the question, that motion's on the floor and needs to be dealt with before we can go to another motion.
All right. Any other discussion? So the motion was made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley, am I correct?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. Any other discussion before we vote? Does anybody want to read the motion so there's a clear understanding?
Yes. So, I'm sorry, before we move forward, we're not voting on the release right now, we're voting on staff moving forward and researching this.
Developing an ordinance.
Developing an ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion that I've got is, and I'm sorry, I'm having to go back through the motions. Okay, so the motion was to direct, direct city staff to develop an ordinance that prohibits the mass release of balloons. And then Councilmember Daniels came back and offered a friendly amendment saying that there's a maximum no more than 10. Friendly amendment was accepted by Councilmember Blackburn and you reconsidered that motion and that's what we've got on the table.
All right. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If that motion passes, I would also request council to consider adding to authorize the city attorney's office to research whether the prohibition of the release of balloons is valid under North Carolina law. Of course, cities are creations of the general assembly. Out of the hundreds of cities, I think there are over 500 cities in North Carolina, only two cities in North Carolina have a ban prohibiting releases of balloons and those are near the Atlantic Ocean. They may have special legislation, but we haven't finished researching that. But I would ask that if it does pass, that it also include to allow the city attorney's office to research whether we have the authority to pass such an ordinance? And also, how would it be enforced? I don't think the police have the resources to enforce such an ordinance, but maybe it could be citation-based and code officers could enforce it. So that would be my legal hurdles and concerns to allow us to look at if this, if the mass ban proposal passes, to include that.
Frankly, I was assuming you were looking at all of our actions to make sure that they were legal. I may have overestimated the role of the attorney's office, but that was my general opinion.
But that's the concern here, yes.
Fair enough.
So some of.
Do I have to second what he says? Do I have to say, wait, is that also another friendly amendment?
Are we going to just, are we going to vote on it and then ask for the, or ask for him, the, our legal counsel to go back and research to see if it's even possible to do that?
I think he needs to research it.
Okay.
Do that, put that before.
Before the ordinance. Of course, we got to research whether it's lawful, so I just wanted to point, I wanted to point that out to the council.
Well, if I may, again, not doing unauthorized practice of law, but, you know, sometimes progress takes us into places where no one has been. And if we as a council decide that this is what we want to do and if a reasonable human being would say this is a valid action, and I just struggle to understand how we would not have legal authority to prohibit litter in the sense that we already do have legal authority to prohibit litter and that somehow we would, we would not have this authority. So I'm, and if we for some reason didn't have this authority, I would want to know why because it seems like it should fall within our purview. So understanding that I'm not an attorney, I appreciate what you're saying and of course we'll have to sort of operate that way, but, but I hope that we would not be kept down if we're going into, into territory where, where we are being progressive and truly visionary and something, just try not to be hindered.
If this motion, if this motion doesn't include the city attorney doing his job, I'm going to withdraw my second.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking at if those, those two cities, if it's the waterways, the laws may be different as opposed to on land?
Well, that is one issue, but also making sure that they're correct in enacting that ordinance, is do we agree with that?
Oh, definitely.
If you have hundreds, probably over 500 cities in North Carolina, only two have it and there are small cities near the beach, we need to make sure, of course, that we have authority. So I didn't, pointing that out the obvious.
All right. All right, so motions, motions have been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes, three, two.
Did we go along with the rule?
No, he voted against it, but he lost because three had voted for it.
All right, so we'll move on to the new business, public hearing. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council, the petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions to speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three is an ordinance to annex the Johnny A. Jones and wife Sandra R. Jones property involving 1.241 acres located along the western right-of-way of Frog Level Road and south of US 13. Planner Chris Kelly has the presentation. Chris?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This property is located in the southwestern quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the western right-of-way of Frog Level Road and 800 feet south of US 13. The current city limits shown on the map is the current city limits and the requested annexation is shown in red. This property is located in the Swift Creek watershed. This property is also located in the primary surface area on the tier growth map and is located in city council voting district number two. This property currently yields one single-family residence with a tax value of $100,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Ms. Kelly?
All right, seen none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none. Public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes, five, two.
We'll move on to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is an ordinance to annex Upton Track, Phase 2, Lot 2, property involving 10.34 acres located along the northern right-of-way of McGregor Downs Road and Bee's Barbecue Road. Again, Mr. Kelly.
This property is located in the northwestern quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the northern right-of-way of McGregor Downs Road, 1,800 feet east of Bee's Barbecue Road. This property is located in the Schoolhouse Branch watershed, excuse me. This property is also located in the preferred growth area on the tier growth map and is located in city council voting district number one. This property is anticipated to yield 100,000 square foot hospital with an estimated tax value of $12 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Ms. Kelly?
I have a question. Did you say a hospital?
Yes, ma'am, 100,000 square foot hospital.
All right, any other questions? All right, seen none. The public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
I approve.
I actually have one question for staff, is, what's the Franklin, Tennessee address in the bottom left-hand corner of the?
I would assume that's the owner's address?
Okay.
All right. The motion by Councilmember Robinson, was that right?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes, 52.
Move on to item number five. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five is, is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance to delete the 500-foot separation requirement from a bar to another bar except in the Bar 22 eligible area. Chief Planner Shontay Gooby has the presentation. Ms. Gooby?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh. May I back up just one second? So this was a text amendment that was initiated by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is an amendment to delete the 500-foot separation between bars. So right now, we talk about the 500-foot rule. We have three components of the 500-foot rule. So we have a 500-foot spacing requirement between bar to bars. We have a 500-foot spacing requirement from a bar to a single-family dwelling, and also a 500-foot separation from a bar to a single-family zoning district. So this actual text amendment is shown in red, so it would be to delete the language at the very top that talks about the separation from a bar to a bar. There is an exception, which is this does not, does not count in the Bar 2022 eligible area. So first of all, this is the eligible area we talked about many months ago. We talked about the yellow box, and that a Bar 2022 could locate in this area. This was sort of designed as an alternate or a Plan B for someone that wanted to open a bar in the downtown area, but because of the 500-foot rule, there essentially wasn't any room. So this deletion, again, for the 500-foot rule separation between just, I'm just gonna say, a regular bar to a bar, does not count in this area. So in green, this is showing our current city limits, and then what you see in red are the four different zoning districts that allow a bar. Now, this doesn't mean a bar can be everywhere in red, it's just showing you the zoning districts. And then, as I talked about before, the Bar 2022 eligible area, I just kind, I just put a blue star just to kind of remind you about that. Currently, this is the bars that we have in the city. Each bar is shown by a little purple circle. I will say that the purple circle does indicate the actual spacing, so that is showing you 500 feet around each establishment. As we have talked about, the downtown area does have bars that are within 500 feet of one another, so you can see there's a little cluster when we look at the downtown area. However, we have five bars right now that are outside of the downtown area. Again, they're shown by the purple circles, and you can see there's separation between all of those establishments. So in staff's opinion, this is in compliance with Horizon's Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Four, specifically with Policy 4.31, which is to modernize, diversify the local economy, support the growth of a variety of employment opportunities, businesses and businesses that diversify Greenville's economy, provide workers with a range of skill sets and training, encourage business growth within incorporated areas, to expand and diversify Greenville's tax base. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request at its April 2023 meeting, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Blackburn?
Did you have questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I'll go, all right, I'll go first. Thank you so much for that presentation. I'd like to sort of take us back to where this started, and some of the work that's taken place. This conversation started because of a request, I'm sorry, what was it?
You have questions for her? Because I have questions for her before we, before we have time.
Yeah, we're asking for questions, not comments.
I have questions.
Okay, sorry.
I have questions, they need context. This started because of a request to have more bars in our downtown area, to end the separation in our downtown area. And we had a study that took place that looked at that separation ordinance and how to possibly address it. And our city staff took considerable time and study to create the idea of Bar 2022, which is what we've adopted in our downtown. And so this gets at sort of my question, which is, the city council asked that we look at other areas in our city where Bar 2022 could be adopted. And so I just want some clarity. Are we considering tonight other areas where Bar 2022 could be adopted, or is this something entirely different?
This has no effect on a Bar 2022 at all.
So in other words, we are not considering those standards of Bar 2022, which again, were, you know, they're, they're, they're standards that, that your department has developed, and they're standards that previously this council approved for our downtown area. But instead of taking those standards and looking at other areas in our city, we're, we're just saying, any kind of bar at all?
This would be, again, what I, this only has to do with what I would say is a traditional bar. And so in that term, what that means is, it's an establishment that sells alcohol, no food. So that is the use we're talking about here between the separation of uses. Alcohol establishment, absolutely no food.
And just to be clear, it's the state, not us, that says you can't serve food in a bar, is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So I guess, just to clarify, is this the, you know, is the Bar 22, is the, the item that council sent to Planning and Zoning on a planning and zoning agenda at the moment?
None.
So they considered the agenda, and they sent us this?
That is correct.
Okay. I have a point of order. Is a motion to continue or to table in, in order at this time? I just, I'd like to, I'd like to know, can I, can I move prior to the public hearing to simply table this, this action?
Yeah, council always, council always has the right to continue an item, particularly a legislative item. If you want to continue it, yes, you could continue.
I think, I move that prior, without taking any further action on this, the, we table this item and, you know, reconsider at some future time our 22 ordinance, but not this, not this, not this order.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any discussion from the council before we move forward?
Can I ask the basis for doing that? Help me understand.
Um, it's, it's non-responsive to council's request, right? We had a set of ordinances in front of us. We asked P&amp;Z to tell us where those ordinances might elsewhere apply. It was a model we had developed, and P&amp;Z, to my knowledge, is simply declining to, to give us comment on that. And that was the item that I, that when this was put on the agenda and was described as a Bar 22 ordinance, that was what I assumed we were seeing. This ordinance is simply an independent development by Planning and Zoning that I think has, you know, really is responsive to our request, and I don't think it should be, I don't think we should continue to consider it. That's the basis for my.
Could I ask Shontay a question?
Absolutely.
Shontay a question? I want to make sure I'm on the same page. So with this amendment as proposed, and really for those who are in the audience and watching, because I'm confused, I'm thinking my, other people, in the downtown area, this is not to allow bars to be added to the downtown area right now, is that correct?
That is correct.
The, the only way to add anything downtown is through the special use permit that we adopted some time ago.
That, and being able to find an area.
That fits the parameters of a special use.
That fits the parameters, yes, sir.
This amendment basically allows a bar to be within 500 feet of another bar outside that district.
That's correct.
But it's still limited by the zoning in terms of can't be near any of those other distances. Basically, it's gonna, if a bar locates, it's gonna be right next to another bar, probably.
That would be the potential for it to, to allow another one, but the residential component still applies.
So it's still gonna limit to a large degree the, where bars can locate.
Right, and you, and you even, if you would like for me to, again, the map I showed you earlier, again, you're dealing with on the air, only the areas that were shown in red on that map to begin with.
Could you put that back up for us as we're talking about this?
So the red is just indicating right now just the districts that allow it. So you're already paring it down, if you will, to the areas in red, and then you have to further pare it down by the 500-foot rules as well.
Which will even make this a smaller area.
Yes.
And the bars currently located outside the Bar 22 area are on a map that you've shown us likewise. The Bar 22 area, there's only five bars.
That is correct.
And so essentially, based on the zoning as it sits, if you, if this amendment goes through, those bars would be probably adjacent to or near the five areas outside the Bar 22, if that'd be fair to say.
I think that's probably where you're going to see them, given that the, that the other areas again are close or beside of residential.
Do you know, was that the discussion the Planning and Zoning had when they proposed that we adopt this?
I don't want to speak for the commission exactly, but I do want to tell you a little bit about the, the conversation that was had. Did, were the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss? We brought back the specific motion that was made to the commission, the, the ask, what did council ask? They had several different meetings discussing, I'll say, items related to alcohol establishments as a whole. As you know, you, you did a text amendment last month that also dealt with alcohol establishments, and that also came from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So staff laid out the ask, and during their conversations, they decided that, they moved forward with working with the bars and, and not with the Bar 2022. And that's how we have this amendment in front of you tonight that was initiated by the commission.
Thank you, that answers my question. Thank you.
All right, so there's been a motion, it's probably second. Any other discussion before we vote? I should say, before ye vote? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
This is a table, Greg.
Yes. Those opposed say nay?
Ask for the vote again if you don't mind.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Motion passes, 52.
All right, thank you very much. Move on to item number six. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item six is the approval of the draft 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to CAPER. I'll call forward Director of Neighborhood and Business Services Tiana Berryman for the presentation. Ms. Berryman?
Good evening. I'm sure that's exactly why you did it. All right, so the CAPER, or the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, referred to as the CAPER, is a requirement by the federal government, by any community receiving CDBG or home dollars. Essentially, we report on the resources and investments that were utilized and received, and also goals and outcomes that were achieved. Okay, so on this chart, you will see, depicted both the resources that were made available, so our annual allocation, as well as the amount that was expended during the program year. Due to these grants being available for multiple program years, it is standard for multi-year projects to be, essentially seeing rollover funds for multi-year projects. So that's why you're seeing the expended amount exceeding the amount of resource made available during that particular year. So for CDBG, we expended just over $1 million, home, also a little over $1 million in CDBG-CV. Staff expended a little over $100,000. Okay? Our goals for the year included creating decent and affordable housing, providing resources for special needs populations, and creating supportive programs for low and moderate income individuals. So there were eight homeowner houses that were rehabbed. These are, these are the number of homes that were completed during the program year. There are others that were initiated during the year, but we only count those that were actually completed during the year. Also, 180 units were initiated for construction. We do think that's worth mentioning, because staff did begin some reimbursements for the Taft Mills project, so you, that's where a bulk of that home allocation was expended, and we expect to see those units coming online in this upcoming year. Okay? 162 homeless individuals were served through community crossroads by way of CDBG dollars, and then also 777 households were assisted through our subrecipient program. Okay? 100% of rehab contracts received for owner-occupied rehabs were awarded to minority businesses for a little over half a million dollars, and there were five nonprofit service providers that were funded through our subrecipient program. Citizen participation included making the plan, the draft plan available through the website and through both Carver and Shepherd Memorial Libraries, and then being available on the community development page of the website, a city's website. And staff is anticipating submitting the final plan to HUD by the end of this month. All right, looks like we are missing, it may be hidden, our, our recommended action. Staff recommends holding the public hearing and approving the 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for CDBG and home programs, and authorizing staff to submit to HUD for final review and approval. That's the end of the presentation, there's just not that last slide, I think it's hidden. So any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Councilmember Blackburn?
And I don't want to put, certainly don't want to put you on the spot, because this may be more of a policy decision. I'm kind of interested in the mechanics before we hold the public hearing. I know some communities are working on some transitional housing, and, you know, tiny houses, and really creative ideas. With these CBDG funds, are we sort of hamstrung in how we spend them, or can we kind of look outside the box in the future with some of these funds? Or do we, are they, are they more dedicated funds?
So the CDBG funds, they are, they tend to be the more flexible federal dollars that we can use for affordable housing. The direction for use was approved through the, through the consolidated plan for the next five years. However, we do have the home ARPA funds that are available, and while there's also a plan that's been approved by council and submitted to HUD for that, we do have opportunities to work with some other service providers in the community for some creative approaches to serving these populations. We anticipate working with entities that might serve the underhoused or homeless individuals as, like community crossroads or other agencies, and then also working with developers, tax credit developers, and things of the like, for opportunities to create more low-income housing.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
To approve?
Yeah, do we have to?
Okay, it's the first reading. It is closed.
Where's the council?
Where's the mayor, where's the municipal lawyer?
We're good, right?
She's right there for now, Danae?
Just a reading, right? No vote?
No, this is approval.
Approval, okay.
This is approval.
Move to approval.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn.
What just happened? What just happened? Emmanuel, you were gone at critical moment.
We didn't know if that was the first reading, or we had to pass it.
Yeah, it's approved.
All right. We got a motion, it's been properly seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Motion passes, 52.
Move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven is the resolution authorizing an application to the Federal Transit Administration for the Section 50. for the Section 5307 FY21 Funding Cycle Grant for Federal Operating and Capital Assistance for the Greenville Area Transit. Public Works Director Kevin Mulligan has the presentation.
Tiana, I think I'm going to blame that last slide for the mix-up, since we were missing that slide. Just kidding. Sorry.
No worries, no worries. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item calls for a resolution authorizing the city to apply for the 5307 grant funds. 5307 funds are funds from FTA that we use to, for the operation of our transit system, as well as some capital funds associated with that. So again, this request is for utilization of fiscal year 21, 5307 funds. Just why we're seeing fiscal year 21 during the pandemic, we used CARES funding, and so there's several years of backlog for 5307 funding. All right, so requirements for applying for this grant are provide adequate notice on a public hearing. The city has complied with these requirements. Conduct a public hearing, which we'll do tonight, and describe how the allocation of funds will be utilized. Here's notice of public hearing. This was on the city's website, as well as in the daily reflector for four consecutive weeks. And this is fiscal year 21. This is the proposed split of the funds available to us. The funds available to us are 1.88 million. Our operation, our operational needs include the salaries, benefits of employees building operations, so the operating you see down there of a million dollars, where our local share is also a million dollars. Capital is ADA of 350,000, and preventative maintenance of 530,000. ADA are the funds we use to, for our complimentary paratransit service that the county provides for us. Preventive maintenance is typically used for the maintenance and repair of our rolling fleet. So we see at the bottom there, a grand total of 1.88 million from FTA, as well as our local share of 1.22 million, for a total of 3.1 million. The total local share is then reduced by the state allocation from NCDOT, known as MAP, or State Maintenance Assistance Program, bringing the city share, local share, to 745,000. So resolution authorizing the filing of the application, and this agenda packet is the full resolution. We will be seeking adoption of this resolution, that the city can apply for these grant funds for use in daily operation of our transit system. Staff recommendation, conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed current application use of these funds.
Any other questions for Mr. Mulligan? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
To approve? I think I, I think I got it. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Black, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Motion passed at five zero.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eight is a resolution authorizing an application to the Federal Transit Administration for the Section 5307 FY22 Funding Cycle Grant for Federal Capital Assistance for the Greenville Area Transit. Again, Mr. Mulligan.
All right, again, Mayor and Council, this is the use of the fiscal year 22 funds. Again, CARES funds were used for the last several years, so this is the same. We're just requesting utilization of the fiscal year 22 funds. We provided the adequate notice and the items we discussed in the previous item. This is the use of, the proposed use of those funds. Proposed use of fiscal, of the 5307 fiscal year 22 funds of 2.4 million is to be used for replacement of four of the city's 35-foot-long buses, as well as for technology upgrades, which include replacing our onboard camera system for all of our transit buses. Each bus is approximately 650,000, and the replacement of the camera system in all 13 buses will cost approximately 160,000. With remaining funds, that would be, so we see $3 million there. That's about 2.8 million with the remaining funds to replace other rolling stock as needed. There are two other vehicles in the city's transit system, our 12-passenger van, as well as a hybrid vehicle that are scheduled to be replaced, so we'd look to replace those as well. The city match would be in the BRF, that transit system has contributed to over the life of the buses. Additionally, general fund match would be required for the cameras of approximately 32,000, and this is in the budget. All right, so again, the resolution in this agenda packet is the full resolution. Seeking the adoption of the resolution so that city manager and staff can apply for these grant funds. Staff recommendation, council conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed grant application.
All right, any questions for Mr. Mulligan? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All those have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
To approve?
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay?
Motion passed at five zero.
All right, we'll move on to other items of business. Madam Manager, item number nine.
Item nine is a resolution of the Historic Preservation Commission requesting an increase in funding for the facade improvement grant program. This was an item added to the agenda by Councilmember, by Councilmember Daniels.
So the Historic Preservation Commission is requesting an additional $1,000, excuse me, for the facade grants.
I think it's a bit more than that.
Yeah, it's more than a thousand.
More than a thousand dollars.
It's 100,000. Oh, I didn't mean to say 100,000. I'm sorry. Time to go. $100,000. If you all recall, we, they had requested an additional $20,000 that was made part of the budget, and so now this is in addition to that for improvements throughout our city.
And if, if I may?
110,000, my correction.
This is also, we, we agreed to raise the cap on the amount any individual?
To 20,000.
From, from, what was it, 5,000 to 20,000? So really, this kind of goes hand in hand with that change, as I see it. What, we just need a motion?
Well, I, I think this needs to be a part of the budget. I think it's something that staff needs to look at. I'm not sure we can do that, make the vote on that tonight.
Or can we? I'm, I mean, I'm here to support it.
Yeah, but we've already, we've done our budget. Our budget's been approved, and so it would have to be amended in some way.
Or you mean for, maybe for next year's budget?
Well, I don't know if they want to wait that long, but...
I don't know if I'd be dedicating money for this council for another council in the future.
This, this is true.
Councilmember Smiley?
What's the, the current balance in this, the contingency line in the current budget? The manager looked at this, at my, at the assistant manager, and the assistant manager looked at the finance.
That was classic.
It wouldn't be as, as a meeting board if you didn't come up.
There's currently $40,000 in contingency.
So 110,000.
How much was the original amount? Was it 40,000?
In contingency?
Yeah.
For this year, do we?
100.
It was 40,000 initially, right? Yeah, it was 40,000.
Okay, good, so we haven't touched it yet.
So I guess then the, there being, you know, not 110,000 in the, we'd have to take it out of another line item. Contingency is, is essentially unassigned. This would really be a direction to, to staff to consider for the next budget cycle, you know, plusing up this, this line. In light of the, the demonstrated desire of the, demonstrated interest in the program, right? If I understand, looking at the numbers I got, that they were funding 20 grand, but there were dozens of additional applications that were not, could not be met with the available funding. Is that a fair summation?
Right, I, I do believe based, and Councilmember Daniels has, is the liaison. There were a number of applications that were not able to be funded because of, because of the $20,000 that was available.
So it just sounds like a program that's very popular with the, with the citizens, and obviously, if I'm looking at the data you gave me, you know, over the last several years, we, it looks like there's been about $50,000 granted in facade grants, and the under, and the, and that has incentivized well over $200,000 worth of innovation. So it seems like someplace where we get a lot of bang for our buck. You know, we spend little money, they spend a lot of money. So, you know, if the motion is to direct staff to, to look at ways to increase this, this funding in the next budget, then I would second that.
And that is the motion?
I second that.
All right.
Just a quick question?
So motion's been made, before any questions? Motion's been made. Councilmember Daniels, you read it?
For staff.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All right, question?
I entirely support directing staff in a few, in the, for the next fiscal year budget, but in the meantime, I don't want to spend all your money. But couldn't we provide another, an additional 20,000 in this budget year, just so they could get some of those projects, get them rolling? Kind of, we've got good momentum now, so...
I would be very careful with spending our contingency this early on, and if we're almost to the quarter, right? End of the first quarter? I'd be very careful, because I think in years past, we've had contingency over $100,000, haven't we? So $40,000 is almost a bare minimum, so I'd be very careful doing something like that. Because I mean, we're still not even through hurricane season yet. We've got a lot of other things. Somebody told me today that, I think the Almack says it's going to be really cold winter time, too. So there's things that could potentially happen. I would be very reluctant to do something like that now. Now, if you got towards the back end of the year, and we're getting close to the end of the, the budget cycle, maybe that's something to discuss and see where we're at. I'd just be very concerned at this point, since we haven't even made it through the first quarter yet.
And I think that's reasonable. I, I think typically, we've got some money funded for, for snow and ice, as well as for hurricanes. I don't know, just a, maybe $10,000. I, I think it's reasonable to go ahead and bump them up a little bit, since they've got, they've increased the, the amount of any individual grant, you know? So we, so we give them 10,000 extra.
I would not touch the contingency right now, just my personal opinion. You have no idea what, what factors could come in over the next three quarters of the year.
So do we vote on that first motion, and then?
Mr. President.
Right, do we, we vote on your motion to direct staff, and I could bring it back, it is another motion, to add, to use some of the contingency funds?
Your prior, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just confirm the motion? Was the motion to direct staff to look into increased funding in the next budget cycle?
Correct.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
And, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, I voted. Yes, I voted in favor. You go ahead. I just was, got it out of park too fast. Is it appropriate at this time to make that second motion, that we provide an, an additional amount to HPC for this program, an additional $10,000 out of contingency? I'll make that as a motion.
When, when did we do the 20,000? How, do you know how long ago that's been?
20,000 was, was several years ago.
No, we did something this year, didn't we?
Well, we, we always, we have provided 20,000 for facade improvements grants in the historic, for the Historic Preservation Commission.
But didn't we do something?
We did an additional 20. I don't know the exact year. Councilmember Daniels, I will say, it was during a period of time where we were meeting virtually, so it would have been a year, year and a half, two years ago.
I thought we did something in person.
So there's been a motion. Is there a second? If not, it'll die. It'll result in a second. Seeing none? Motion pending. All right, that's it. Please, Madam Manager?
I have no report, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to...
I want to read the, I want to read the, the agenda for a future meeting. I miss it already. I miss it already.
You miss it already?
Or just the agenda for a past meeting. Any, any agenda at all.
I'll read the agenda for Monday night.
Okay.
All right, we'll go, start with Councilmember Daniels today.
I would start with me. Okay, so my granddaughter turned 13 yesterday. Life is different in our family. Also, there are a lot of events coming up this Saturday. A Mex, the Mexican is having their 20th Latino Festival at the Town Commons this Saturday, starting at 1:00, and it'll be great. And then there will be popsicles in the park. That is a voting, registration, and informational session at Greenville Terrace Park. That'll be from 11 until 2. We will be, there will be a mock voting at the Ebb Center from 11 until 1. So please attend some of these. There are a lot of changes with voting, as I stated before, coming forward. We need to be wise in knowing what's required, what is needed, so that we can get our vote out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Blackburn?
I just wanted to continue Councilmember Daniels' observations about voting. It is an election season. November 7, municipal elections take place, and I hope everybody is going to, we do have a new photo ID in place, requirement in place now, and hopefully, everybody will have a chance. If you don't already have that government issued, government-issued photo ID, you'll have a chance to get one. And how important that is, because everybody has a right to a vote. We want to make sure that everybody's able to exercise that right. And also, it's great to see all the excitement about this municipal election, and I share that excitement. It's a time where we look at who we are as a city and where we're going to go in the future. I also would like to just take a moment to speak to the announcement by our city manager that she was leaving us, and I just want to say how much I've enjoyed working with our city manager, and what a consummate professional she is, and an excellent manager, and how much the city has benefited from her service. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Robinson. Well, you skipped over and came way down here. You threw, you threw Councilmember Smiley off.
Yeah, I know. He was getting ready to say, no comment.
He's like, a couple of things. The 9/11 this week kind of echoed something for me that I wished I would have said in the last meeting, but I did not. Probably, it was last Wednesday? I think, yeah, last Wednesday. It was a very, very hot day, and I had gone to the jewelry store to buy my daughter something for a special event that was coming up, and I walked out and I had a suit on, and I was like, man, I'm sweating, and I hadn't even gotten to my car yet. Well, all of a sudden, when I walked outside, there was a fire truck, and, and these guys were in the turnout gear. And there was a gas leak at, at the store, and I just took the time, walked up and said, "Thank you." Because these guys were walking out in turnout gear, and it was close to 100, and I'm thinking, I'm talking about being in my suit sweating, and these guys do this. We've had gas leaks the last, what, today and yesterday and stuff. So the next time you see a police officer, EMT, or fire rescue person, take just a second to go say, "Thank you." I did that, and apparently, it made their day. It wasn't a big deal. I was walking to my car and just said, "Hey, guys, I appreciate what you do, and I appreciate that you're doing as well." Because they're doing that when we're complaining about heat. These guys are in heavy turnout gear, and they're risking their safety and working under unfavorable conditions, and it's amazing if you just take the time to go say, "Thank you," even to a police officer, EMT, because of what they do. So do that, not just to them, but any city employee. I mean, the guys who pick up the guard, I try to make a big habit to wave to them every morning, to let them know that they're appreciated and acknowledge their presence. I would encourage our members to do that. Number two, I always love to see voices... Number two, I always love to see voices heard, beginning in Platte and zoning and continuing today. I want to hear your voices, whether you're in my district or not, whether I agree with you or not. It's about hearing from our citizens. And as I said to a person when I first began this journey, I, he said, well, you're not in my district. Why do you care about what I think? I said, I may not be in your district, but I represent you, because you're part of the people I vote for, so I want to hear your voice. So it's good to see everybody coming tonight. If you can't hear those on TV, we'd always love to hear from you. I'm always willing to hear everybody. I don't care what your voice is, what your position is. Again, I'd love to hear from you, and I'm sure my fellow councilmembers were. And finally, Ann Wall. We're sending you off. What a great, yeah, I'm the rookie on this board, so I've had the least amount of experience with you, but it's been fun. And, and we've gone through some challenging times. And somebody told me, you'll get about 10 phone calls in two years. Well, that person was completely wrong. I've gotten a bunch, and we've got thrown into the meat grinder, and I've enjoyed my time with you. So from me personally, thank you for, for helping me walk through, because you helped me walk through a lot of the stuff as a rookie. I'm still a rookie. I think I said to you late this spring, and maybe I now graduated from rookie status, but I appreciate you helping me through everything from day one until now. So I appreciate you, and I wish you the best of luck to you and your family, particularly your father.
I still consider you a rookie.
Well, I compare to you, I am.
Councilmember Smiley?
I just want the public to know that Councilman Robinson's email address is lrobinson@greenvillencie.gov. I have no further comments.
I'll give you my cell phone number if you want it likewise. I have no fear.
Let's hear it. Are you ready?
Yeah, 252-916-1729. But if you're going to call me, I don't want prank calls. I don't want calls from the stations for selling me something.
Do you have Chris Albert in a can?
But I, I, I will respond to any call. It may take me a while, because I stay busy in court. But if you've got a cap off your sewer, if you've got water collecting in your grate in front of your house, or somebody's flying up and down your house, and you hear a loud muffler, or somebody's cut your internet line and you need service, which are just a few of the phone calls I've tasked, you know, or if you've got a concern about some services, you text me or call me. I can't tell you I'm going to solve it, but I know that the staff of this city are beyond excellent. And so when I pick up the phone and try and hook up with my city manager, assistant city manager, my clerk over here, or the head of public works, or whoever they are, they are, as I say, Johnny on the spot. And so I may get credit for it, but always trying to say, look, I just made a phone call. This staff person solved your problem or addressed it. So again, that's what we're here for, small or big. I mean, the cap off the sewer line was one of my first phone calls, and I was very proud to be able to solve that problem for that, that person that lived in my neighborhood. So again, you've heard my number. I'm not afraid, but don't call me instantly. You want to buy some insurance? No, I don't want that phone call, okay? But if it's anything that affects you as a citizen, that you're concerned about, whether you're in my district, which is District 5, and I'm running unopposed, unless there's a right hand, I'm glad to help you in any way I can. Or if it's outside District 5, and any of my fellow members, because I'm sure they will address it just as quickly as I will. But I'm glad to hear anybody that has a concern. And you may think, well, he's not going to agree with me. That's fine. If I don't agree, I still want to hear what you got to say. Right? Is that enough?
Because less is more?
Okay. You always get more with less. Just remember that.
Put that on the bus.
All right.
I couldn't fit on the bus. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover?
Well, I like to say it was very pleasant to look out and see people in the audience that decided to come to the council meeting. A lot of people think it's boring, but you learned a lot tonight, didn't you? So, you know, it's not a boring meeting. If you want to know what your city council is doing, I've been doing this for 23 years, and I have an open door policy, Mr., Mr. Less, I have a.
I'm never home, so that's why I don't have.
I have an open door policy, so my doorbell is ringing many times, and I invite anyone into my house. I don't care what you look like or who you are. You could look like a million dollars, or you can look like a dollar. Anybody is a person that needs to hear, needs to be heard. And I just thank them for having the trust in me that they could come to my home and sit in my home and talk to me about their problems. There is still some problems in the Dream Park, and I guess I need to talk to you about that. I got a, a person that came back today, but I was, didn't get a chance to talk to him because I was getting ready for a doctor's appointment. But I will talk to them about that. And I'd just like to say thank you all, because a lot of people think that city council is easy. It is not easy. It is busy. And you stay busy. I mean, all times of night, you get calls, because my phone is in the phone book. I don't hide it from anybody. So I get a lot of calls and have gotten a lot of calls over the years. And so, you know, it's my pleasure to get up out of my bed with it freezing outside and go to a center where elderly people are living, and the heat is out, and it's so cold in there. And it's, it's, it's just to know that people have enough trust in you to call you, and you're going to do something about it. So keep me in your prayers, and I'll keep you in mind. And God bless all of you.
Thank you very much. I don't have a whole lot. I just want to say thank you to our city manager. I know she loves the accolades over here and all the positive things that we're saying about her, but we appreciate everything that you have done. Your tenure here is not done yet.
No.
We still have many days ahead and a lot of work ahead before you leave and depart, but we appreciate all that you've done. You've done an incredible job. I've had the pleasure with working with you for six years now, a little over six years now. And I've really enjoyed it. You've done a really good job for our community. I feel like that our city is in the best position that it has ever been since I've been here. I can only say that. I've been here since 2003 roughly, so about 20 years. But I appreciate your service to the city, appreciate all that you've done, and the staff that you've created and the staff that you have been able to change the culture in. And I know that the city is in a much better place because of you. So thank you for all that you've done. This won't be the last time. We've got a couple more of these that we can do, too, so. With that, are we going into a closed session tonight? We're good? Perfect. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Have a good night, everyone.